I'd like to ask everyone to stand for their pledge of allegiance and to remain standing to, and keep in mind all those serving across the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, and I want to thank everyone for, excuse me, for attending the planning board meeting of July 18th for the Village of Woodbury. To my right, we have Robert Anzalone; to my left, we have Sandra Capiglione; we have Chris Gerver; Rich Catagio; our secretary, Galnogle; all the way to the far side, we have Dennis Lindsay, our engineer; Kelly Norton, our attorney; and John Collins, our traffic consultant; and I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. Board members, have you had a chance to review the minutes from June 20th, 2018?
Yes.
If so, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just spelling of my last name.
Okay, we'll have that corrected for the, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next item on the agenda, Central Valley Property Review Resolution for Site Plan, Special Permit and ARB for the Construction of a Two-Story Mixed-Use Building and Parking Lot Expansion. Said property is located at 252 Route 32 in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 230, Block 7, Lots 17 through 19. Before we go any further, just wanted to be noted that on June 22nd, I received a three-page letter from Felicida, or Felicia Farrar. She was a resident that was, did speak at that meeting that night. And just for the, there were some issues in here that was brought up, and they were explained, and, and there, one of the things is the comp plan states that this is a kind of building that belongs in a village. She also complained about how her tax money is being paid for business problem, which is not being done. Reports from the New York State DOT and our traffic consultant, which did lengthy reporting and going back and forth, so the New York State DOT has told us what we can and cannot do for that location. There's a few others. And basically was, you know, it's her opinion that she's not happy with this, but, but we're, the applicant is before us, and we're going to be reading the resolution tonight. And this will not be the tallest building in the village. The Ed Center and the old school are the tallest buildings that I am aware of within the village, so that's another, I wanted that to be clear. And also, the village planning board members, we are not elected officials. We are appointed and volunteer our time to this board, and I just want that clear so that we don't run for our seats. The village board and trustees, they interview us, they go through our qualifications, and they're the ones that appoint us. So I just wanted to be known that we are not elected officials. All right. With all that being said, applicant have anything to say before I get into the nuts and bolts here? Board members?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Steve, on the map, that no left turn, or, I guess it's going to be a sign?
Correct.
Okay. That's going where, on that curb?
If you look on Sheet 2, you'll see that it's on Estrada Drive, so it's going to be on your right-hand side. Prior, if you make a turn onto Estrada from Route 32, it'll be on your right-hand side.
Right. There's, there's a sidewalk there, and it curves around onto Estrada Road. So it's just going to be like a regular?
It's a standard, it's, the sign is, you know, uniform sign that's, you know, under the transportation uniform signage.
It's the manual uniform traffic control device.
That's what I was trying to, manual.
And I guess I'm curious, how, what's the distance between that sign and the actual turn? How are people going to know that that's?
Well, we have that on the plan, so it's going to be installed at that location. I don't have the exact measurements. We can put that on the plan prior to signature if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I mean, the way people come around that corner, I live there, that's why I see it every day, the way people come around that corner, I don't know if they're even going to see it before they're already on Estrada, you know, making their way to that entrance or exit.
John, do you have an answer for that, or do you have a microphone?
From the sign to the?
The two engineers are looking for scale to make sure we have the measurement to give to the board.
Chris thinks it's about 18 feet.
Dennis is actually going back to hieroglyphics, he's making the scale.
One inch was 20 feet.
Well, yeah, but I don't have a scale.
I have what you want.
Say it again?
It's about 50 feet.
50 feet?
From the edge, from the approaching edge.
Okay. I don't know, I just, I have a concern that that may not be seen, but...
People are going to miss it.
What happened is, I concur, because of the close distance, and we had this lengthy discussions about the operation of that between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM. And when we get to the draft resolution, I have certain comments in there that we're going to monitor that as time goes on to make sure people are hearing to it.
Okay.
And then if, if they're not, there is a recommendation, if the board adopts it, to go back and revisit that issue.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Consultants, any?
I have one for the traffic consultant.
Okay, go ahead.
The, I believe the three spots in front of TD Bank were taken into account for total parking for that, your total parking count?
No, only onsite parking.
Okay, because we had, I thought that was discussed last meeting, that they would use the three spots.
It was mentioned that there were offsite parking spaces.
They're not using as a total, okay.
Dennis, Kelly, John, anything further? All right, board members, I have your approval to read the draft resolution of approval for the lot merger, site plan, special permit, and architectural review board for Central Valley Property Management LLC.
Maria?
Yep.
I'm sorry. We didn't, we didn't actually discuss the waiver at the last meeting. We didn't do a percentage because you said we wanted to see the bank parking.
That's on Page 5, that's on Page 5, in bold italics, for you to consider.
So that's just?
So when we get to the?
Okay.
You haven't, you haven't done that part yet, but I didn't want it to be forgotten, that's why I included it, but in bold italics.
That's why it's highlighted.
Okay, I just thought we had to do that before.
You have considered, the applicant has made a presentation to you why the waiver should be granted. I mean, they made a presentation to you, it's the finding that you haven't made, whether it's appropriate, whether that waiver or some other waiver would be acceptable to you. But that's what you have to make the conclusion.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Page 5, and in bold print and in italics, it says, "On July, blank, 2018, the planning board granted the applicant's request for a waiver from the code required 80 parking spaces necessary for the proposed use of the property and reduced the requirement to 66 constructed parking spaces and five banked parking spaces to be developed, and the building inspector determines that these are needed." So, board members, give me your concerns. Robert?
That's good.
All right. Sandy?
The one, again, and I'm sorry, I feel like I'm beating a horse, a dead horse, the one where the island is. If that, if it turns out that that has to be used, that whole island comes out.
No, only the portion that's going to be required, about a third of it will come out, half of it will come out, and the remaining part of that island will be, will remain as landscaped.
Chris?
My only concern is, is the size of the, you know, square footage. The square footage dictates that they're supposed to have 80 parking spots. We don't have a crystal ball of what's going to go into that facility or that structure. I think based on other strip malls up and down 32, what you see is parking conditions go there during different times of the day. I'm concerned that there's just not going to be enough parking, there's not overflow parking onto Estrada, it's a now road to begin with, and I think will cause inconvenience to the residents in that area with, without having the proper number of parking spots. Look at the gym that's right next door to it, when they host one of their classes, that lot is completely full, and they're turned, they're up onto, they're parked up onto 32. Who's to say if a popular restaurant was to go into here, that the same thing's not going to happen on a Friday and Saturday night, and there's going to be no overflow parking for them? So I think the applicant should make provisions for the full 80 spots.
No, I'm going to discuss it the last minute.
I understand all the board's concerns and whatnot. If there is a problem, Chris, with the, with the gym exercise program that's down there, then someone needs to go to the building inspector and needs to make a formal complaint because that was approved with a certain amount of parking. So if there is a problem with that, then residents or, they need to go to the building department and file a complaint with them, and they would have to be readdressed and come back before the board to see what their resolution would be for the parking. In regards to the parking in front of the bank or the other businesses that are long from there to Smith Clover Road, whoever parks wherever they can on 32, it's not the optimal. And there's also a small parking area across from Smith Clover Road, which was, that's a village, small parking area. I don't, I think there's maybe nine or 10 parking spots in there. And as to other sites that have parking, we have another business down here in town, which is a pharmacy, they have numerous parking spaces, and if any time, at any given time, there might be four or five people in that parking lot. People do park there, and they walk across the street to the other businesses. Residents know where they can and cannot go to make life easier for parking. We also have the mall that's across from you, on Rose Place, they have parking in the front, they have parking in the back, and that parking lot is never full either. You can go down to Coles and down in that section, that parking lot is never full. And we have all this parking where we take away natural drainage, because we say X amount of parking, and we do have other applications that, over the last 18 years that I'm aware of, that we've put shadow parking, that if this was needed, they would have to come back before the board. So to me, I'm okay with this, and if something arises, then it's going to be up to the applicant to come up with a solution if and when someone makes a complaint to the building inspector. Until any complaints are filed with them, only then will they be referred back to us if it can't be remedied with the building inspector and surrounding areas. So I'm okay with offering a waiver for this, and to go along with this waiver down to 66, excuse me, and five banked parking, which would bring it up to 71.
But the facilities you talk about don't have taxpayers over commercial structures. The pharmacy doesn't have apartments over it, Coles doesn't have apartments over it. That lends a completely different situation here, where you're going to have potential of people in that lot all of the time. Most people own one or two cars, a lot of families own two cars, they're two-bedroom, some of them are two-bedroom apartments, you've got to look into the fact that there's going to be at least two cars there. I mean, and go back and have them come up with another, what is it, nine spaces if you can, I mean, we already looked at the site plan, they already needed a variance for the lot. Where are you going to get the, the earth to put nine more spaces in?
Understood. And I'll give you, there's another business in town in Central Valley, that's Law Office, they have X amount of parking, they have apartment up above. You have Jay's Deli, they have apartments up above, and everyone seems to park. So I hear what you're saying, but there's also vari, there's all, there's variables all up and down Route 32, where there's a business and then there's apartments above it. You also have the doctor's office, Dr. Pelisi's office, he has his business, and there's an apartment above it, and there's, parking is, is there. And I've never, I have never heard of a complaint, and I'm sorry, in 18 years, that was given to the building inspector on parking that's been waived by this board. And I don't think, Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, have we ever had to go into shadow parking on any property, on any project? Maybe one?
I think we've built out the shadow parking, but it's been in connection with additions. I think Bond Street, we had something that had been shown as shadow parking, and then they wanted to put an addition, or they changed the use to mini storage instead of large-scale storage.
Right.
But this dialogue is good, because this is exactly what they presented. They're, they're trying to demonstrate to the board, and they did through their discussions, that they thought that your, and your code says this too, and your comp plan says it, that you don't want to overpark. And in cases where there are uses, that they would be offset in their requirements for parking, you should consider, it doesn't mean you should grant, but you should consider whether a reduction would be warranted. So these are the two opposing thoughts about parking here, and the question is, has the applicant demonstrated to your satisfaction? And then, then you should make a decision on that.
But there was discussion about the size of the restaurant. Is, I don't see that as a condition.
That's limited. That's limited on the parking plan. They put 1,479 square feet, I believe, for the restaurant, they're limited to that. They could change the restaurant to a downscale, I think Gary would approve an office in there or retail, because it has a lesser parking requirement, but they could not increase the size or put multiple restaurants in without coming back to the board.
But that, I don't, that's not part of the resolution, though.
It's on the plan, it's part of the site plan. If Kelly thinks it's appropriate, or you think it's appropriate to put in the resolution, we could do that too, but I think, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all, all the things that are on the plan are part of the approval process.
If you'd like, I can put that in the nature of the application paragraph, which is where I say it's mixed-use retail and residential. I can include mixed-use retail, whatever the square footage is, of restaurant and residential, if you want me to do that, so that it sets it out there, but it is on the plan, so.
I would feel more comfortable with that as part of the resolution.
So, if it goes in the resolution, then the largest restaurant that could go in was 14, and they couldn't combine two storefronts together?
Not for that use, because it has a higher parking requirement. There's similar things for dent, for medical. Medical has a higher use too. They, they would have to stay within the category of what they've received approval for. And to make it easy for you and for Kelly, you might want to simply refer to the, the parking table that's put on Plan C 100, and that references all the uses.
Right. I, personally, I would like to see it in the resolution. That's just my opinion.
When we get to that item number, because we have 27 points to go through, so with all that being said, can I, I'll make the motion that we grant the waiver of 66 constructed parking spaces with five banked parking. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Chris?
Nay.
Okay. Sandy?
I'm going to say no.
Okay. Motion passes 3 to 2. Resolution of approval, specific, excuse me, specific conditions. One, this approval shall be conditioned upon compliance with all conditions contained within the decisions of the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals dated July 26, 2017, and June 13, 2018. You do have a copy, right, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, prior to signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall provide dated plans for the elevations and floor plans prepared by Barry Terrick, architect. Number three, the eastbound left turns from Estrada Road into the property are prohibited from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM every day. The applicant shall post appropriate signage satisfactory to village engineer.
Maria, I have additional.
Should, I just want to add, before you, should we say the village engineer and/or the building inspector? Or should we have, for the signage?
We can say, we can say building inspector in consultation with the village engineer.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I haven't checked out what you said.
Okay. The attorney comes through.
I agree with him.
Oh, we have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hello. All right, so, so what you have written here is what's going to replace what I've...
No, that's a replacement, supplemental.
Supplemental? All right, so, in addition to what I just read, number three, this left turn restriction will be monitored for violations by the applicant and the village every six months, starting at the initial CO and continuing for a period of one year after full occupancy. 90% occupancy in parentheses. If violations continue to occur, the village may request the applicant to submit a traffic evaluation outlining the violation with appropriate recommendations for corrective actions, including geometric revisions. If corrective measures are approved by the planning board, a revised site plan documenting the measures will be submitted by the applicant to the planning board. Steve, did you get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. You're okay with that? Board members, you're okay with that additional language?
Yes.
Number four, there shall be a two-hour parking restriction for all spaces in the parking row adjacent to the east side of the building. The applicant shall post appropriate signage satisfactory, make that change, the village building inspector in conjunction with the village engineer. Did I say that right?
I'm just going to say in consultation.
In consultation, okay. I couldn't remember, all right, in consultation with. Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes.
You're okay with the change? Okay. Number five, prior to signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to show the five parking spaces that have been banked or set aside not to be constructed at this time. The additional parking spaces shall be constructed and strike upon a determination of the building inspector that they are needed to avoid congestive parking on the property. Number six, prior to signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a note or indication of the five banked parking spaces in the parking requirements table. Do we want to add in that section about including the parking? Or where do you want to add that Sandy asked about?
The condition.
The square footage of the restaurant. Where do you want to put the square footage of the restaurant later on?
I was just, I was just putting that up at the top where nature of the application, where I say, usually I'll say it's single-family dwellings, something like that, so up there I had mixed-use retail, and I just added, comma, 1,479 square foot, square feet of restaurant use and residential development.
All right, then I'm going to take a step back, so everyone on the first page where it says nature of application, Central Valley Property Management LLC, the applicant has applied for lot merger, site plan, special permit, and architectural review board approval pursuant to Chapters 8 and 310 of the Village of Woodbury Code to construct a mixed-use retail, comma, 1,479 square foot space of restaurant and residential development on 1.56 acres of property with frontage along Route 32. We're okay with that?
But does that, does that necessarily restrict it to that limit?
That's all it's listed as being approved for, that's also all it's listed as being approved for that use on these plans, which are the plans that you're approving.
Okay. They can't exceed 1,479 square feet for restaurant space.
Right.
Because it's on the plans, and now it's in the resolution.
Okay.
All right. Seven, all loading shall take place on the property, not on the adjacent public roadways. Eight, prior to signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a note requiring the existing two remain guardrails shall be cleaned and refurbished to both functional and attractive to the satisfaction of the building, village building inspector slash code enforcement officer, or shall replace the guardrail with new. Nine, prior to signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a note reserving eight parking spaces for residential units on site. The applicant shall post appropriate signage satisfactory to the village engineer. Make that change to include?
Building inspector in consultation with the village engineer.
Number 10, the proposed users must collectively be within the lot area restrictions, including the associated parking requirements in both the plan notes and the village code. Prior to the operation of any and all uses on the property, the building department must be notified to ensure compliance with the same. 11, prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans so that the landscaping slash screening is in compliance with the village code, which requires screening to be between five feet to six and a half feet. 12, all deliveries and garbage slash refuse pickup on this site shall be limited to a 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
11.
11, excuse me. 13, are we addressing that with the note here from, if the New York State Department of Transportation in Perrin's, New York, NYSDOT restricts turning movements at the driveway to Route 32, those restrictions shall be shown on a revised site plan submitted to the planning board. In addition, as part of the NYSDOT highway permit, the applicant will provide slash install modems for the signal of Route 32 slash Estrada Road and Route 32 slash Smith Clover Road. If approved by the NYSDOT, the state can then use this communication equipment to ensure that the two signals are coordinated. Would you like to discuss that, Steve?
Yes, I'd like to discuss that. As you know, we've gone through extensive traffic analysis. But first of all, this is the first time I've seen this note, and I'm not sure what sort of price tag that note comes with, with regards to including the modems in the signals. But we have gone through extensive traffic analysis. The project has seen that there's no significant impact to any of the analyzed intersections within the area of the site. Where we've submitted our perm 33 with the DOT, they've reviewed everything that we've submitted to this board. Your consultants have also reviewed, reviewed everything submitted to this board. And, you know, I can't say for now, right now, at this point in time, that we would go along with this particular requirement.
John? The reason for this requirement, we reached out to DOT, and the state is now adapting smart signals. Our initial discussion with DOT, we didn't think it appropriate for an applicant to...
Is the microphone on? Or bring it a little closer? Thank you.
Is that better now?
Perfect.
Okay. We didn't think it appropriate that the, that these two signals should be brought up to that standard. In fact, there was a memo given to the board last time with respect to a recommendation by Ali Zimmer, who was the permit coordinator with the DOT in Poughkeepsie. Just for Steve's idea, the cost involved with those modems is about $5,000 max per modem, so a total cost of $10,000, it's not a $100,000, $200,000 fee. What this does allow is the fact is that a number of times, the signals do go out, and then all of a sudden, they don't, they don't, they can't be coordinated, and there's backup queues, et cetera. So it's a benefit to the applicant because they have the driveway to Estrada and a driveway to 32 in close proximity to those two signals, that any backup, et cetera, would cause operational difficulties if they had driveway. If we can, with their assistance of that, we can get communication from the DOT to reset the signals, I think it would be beneficial for everybody in the car, including the applicant. And that's why we put it in this resolution. It's not to cause a significant cost implication to this development, it's to allow the state to communicate, get out there and fix it quicker.
John, what did you say the cost was again?
It's roughly $5,000 a modem, yeah.
For each? All right.
Madam Chairman, one quick question on this item, and it requires that if the DOT restricts turning movements, that they return to the planning board. Generally, when it's solely within the discretion of the state, and they have authority over it, as long as this is being done in, you know, requirements of, of the New York State Department of Transportation, I don't know that the planning board has anything to do or can, can do anything other than maybe, I'm not sure. We've done this with Woodbury Common. They had to get a plan that was approved for access up there, but you didn't have any control over what that was. It's within the frame or the authority of the DOT. So I just, I just wonder.
No, the intent there was to make sure that the board is aware of the restriction, that it's on file, and there's no approval required by the planning board.
Okay.
It was for informational purposes only, so there's one plan that shows whatever the DOT does out there.
All right, and I, I don't know, I mean, perhaps it should come back here, but I just... I mean, perhaps it should come back here, but I just don't want to, I think it starts the whole process all over again because I think that that is just gonna be what DOT requires.
Yeah. The intent was not to start the process, the intent was to keep the board appraise of the issue, and that becomes the plan on file. But I can go either way. I mean, it's...
Kelly, with the first part of that, number 13. If the DOT does restrict returning with a revised site plan, it would just be, that would go to the building inspector first, then to us, correct?
Right. This is something Dennis and I were actually just talking about this because typically you would just say, you would cut it off and say that it wouldn't be shown on a revised site plan. You would say that those restrictions would be provided to the building department. But if something that they have done in restricting movements actually closes off one of the entrances somehow, and then everything goes out another way, that's something that should be returned to you. So I think it should be revised that those restrictions shall be provided to the building department, and then the building department determines whether or not that that needs a site plan amendment.
Okay.
Obviously, I'll clean up that language a bit, but something to that effect.
Okay. Board members, you're okay with that first part of the paragraph?
Yes.
With the revision? Okay.
I have a question for John. John, did they do anything to the Estrada Road light? Because it seems to be more responsive. It seems to be working better every time I come by that.
That's because we keep on making a call to the DOT.
Well, it worked. It seems better.
It was. It was not working. We called them, and then in discussing it further, we talked about what could be done. And the cheapest thing is this modem that allows them to dial up right from their desk, they can change the, bring the two signals back in operation.
Okay. Now to the second part of number 13. I understand it's additional cost, but there's also, the next application they're gonna be reviewing, they're gonna be impacting these same two intersections, which it all goes hand in hand. I understand the need for adaptive lighting, but I don't see where it should be solely on this application. But I, you know...
I tend to agree. The only problem I have is this is the only applicant that's going to the DOT for a permit.
Correct.
The other applicant that is not. So if the board can think of a, I mean, it could be a shared cost, and they would be reimbursed for half the cost by the other applicant if the board wants to entertain that. That's fine.
Because...
But it should be only one permit, too.
One, right. What I'm getting at is that the intersection of Smith-Clove and 32, it benefits the businesses on Smith-Clove. It benefits the business across the street. It benefits the school buses. The one at Estrada, it benefits the gas station and the other businesses and the residents. So I know where we're going with this because we've talked about it, but I don't, I don't know if it's best interest to move forward to have this applicant take this on and possibly go into the village board of trustees to see what kind of relief? Because this will impact all residents and all businesses up and down 32. So I don't know what the best answer is right now.
Well, maybe Steve will take us off the hook and volunteer.
Well...
Well, how about this? First, since this is really pretty new to myself and my client, we are, as I said, we have already made application to the DOT. We're in the world of the DOT right now. That's their road, that's their corridor, those are their signals. If, you know, and again, as I said, we had done extensive analysis that everyone's had an opportunity to review with no significant impacts to the existing traffic patterns. They, if it's in the purview of the DOT, if we're required to do that as part of our permit, we're gonna be required to do that. I do agree with you, Maria, that it's, you know, it's a shame that one applicant has to make this off-site improvement that benefits the entire corridor. But in an effort to move this thing along, let's cap it at $10,000, $5,000 each. And if we're required by the DOT to put them in, we'll put them in.
Okay.
Oh, and then I'm gonna go back to the first part.
Yes.
Because the first part is, we also analyzed no left-hand turn out of the parking lot. If it got restricted by the DOT, reviewed by your consultants, we don't need to come back and rehash that if the DOT does restrict it. We would like that courtesy.
Well, that's where we're saying the building department?
Building department.
It'll go to the building department because that's the added language. Board members, your thoughts of all this that we discussed?
Could we just get one bit of clarification from Steve for what he was just saying? Is this that you are willing to make this off-site improvement up to $10,000? Or you're willing to make this if the DOT is required?
We're willing to make it if the DOT makes it a requirement.
Okay. Because if the DOT required it and it was $15,000, you aren't gonna be restricting it. That was just my question. Okay.
Can I talk to the DOT?
Because I know also, and all due respect to all the consultants out here, they're terrible estimators. So when you tell me it's $5,000, it's gonna be more than it.
No. To Steve's benefit, we've done this before, and we've checked with equipment operators. All it is is one modem that just goes into the cabinet. There's no loops, there's nothing else. It just allows for communication. So the cost of that, it could in fact be less.
I'm gonna throw something out there. Now, there are other projects that are before the board, that will be before the board. When they do their traffic reports, they go as far north as 32 and Smith-Clove Road. Down the line, if, as these applications come, get approved or come on board, how can this applicant be reimbursed? Would they have to go to the planning board or village board? I mean, I'm just asking because, to me, I know it's not fair, but if it has to be done to get this application moving forward, I'm just asking a question because what do I do when these other applications come before the board and they're including Smith-Clove and Estrada and 32 as their traffic studies?
Therein lies the issue.
Okay.
I think it may be best, in this instance, this was never discussed previously as a mitigation to traffic, but if it is something that the DOT is looking for as part of their highway permit, then I think similar to the first sentence, this should be revised to if the DOT requires the installation of these modems, then said improvements shall be so installed. Basically, whatever the DOT is gonna require to give the permit, they're gonna have to do. I think you're gonna run into some problems by just now recommending this when it wasn't previously discussed as a mitigation measure.
Okay. Are you okay with what we've discussed?
I'm good.
Board members, you're okay with what's been discussed on this item number?
Yes.
I have Rich? Sandy?
Yes.
Okay. I heard Chris. All right. Number 14, prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall include details for the dumpster enclosures, proposed fencing, and guardrail satisfactory to the building inspector in consultation with the village engineer. Right?
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Can we just strike guardrail from that? Because we could cover that on item number eight.
Okay, we'll take guardrail out, and we'll put dumpster enclosures and proposed fencing. Is that okay with everybody? I can't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Fifteen, all waste shall be placed inside the dumpsters as shown on the plans, and the areas surrounding the dumpsters shall be kept in a neat condition. Somewhere in years past, we've always said the dumpsters to be maintained like new and all repairs. How could we make sure that that's... Because it probably should be, actually, number 14, that the dumpster, well, it should be all of them. The dumpster enclosures, the proposed fencing, and the guardrails to be kept in a...
Use whatever condition you've previously used so that it's consistent with your prior practice to say like new. I know I've seen it, I just can't...
I can't think of which...
And I didn't pull it from a different one when I was drafting this. Steve, it basically will say that you have to keep it in a...
We will.
Okay.
Because if it's not written, it's not said.
Not a problem with us on this one.
Okay. All right. Number 16, potential condition, fate of existence stone swell adjacent to the property entrance along Estrada Road. What are we doing with that? Dennis? Stone swell adjacent to the property entrance on Estrada.
I think there was, was there a question on ownership of this, Steve?
No. The question, I think it was more of a question of why was it there? And we didn't really have an answer to that.
It doesn't seem, I don't know if it serves any purpose. Do you own it?
We own it.
This one?
Where's the swell? Sandy, where is it?
It doesn't need to stay, it doesn't need to go. I don't think it's in the way of their construction. If you want it to be removed, I suppose it could. It's like, it's a sidewalk, right?
Well, it's like a concrete, I look at it as a concrete drainage swell. It's, but it doesn't really, there's nothing that drains to it.
Well, there's going to, curbs going in now, so there's certainly nothing that's gonna be going to it.
And we could take it down, just seat it. Whatever you want.
Do we need to have it as a condition, or can we have it revised on the plan?
With all these conditions, you might as well just add another condition.
Oh, thank you, Dennis. All right, so who's gonna, that'd be number 16. So what's the language going to be, lady and gents?
You wanted just...
Just removed and grassed, is that what you're looking for? Okay, so it would be prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans to depict the existing stone swell adjacent to the property entrance along Estrada Road being removed and grassed and seeded, something like that.
Applicant, okay with that?
Yes.
Board members, we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Seventeen, prior to signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans to include all prohibitive turning movement signage on sheet C-201 in the onsite sign schedule. Eighteen, prior to signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated May 22, 2018 to the satisfaction of the village engineer. We can leave that as is because that's his memo, right? Nineteen, applicant has notes on plans for long-term inspection and maintenance of stormwater facilities. These procedures shall be submitted in accordance with the reasonable requirements of subsection 267-10 of the village code and the village engineer. We're good? Twenty, all fences and guardrails that are part of the plan being approved herein must be maintained in good and safe condition to the satisfaction of the village building inspector slash code enforcement officer.
Isn't that repetitive?
Is that... What number do we have that in?
Fourteen and fifteen are going to be merged. So that would be your number 15. But that's the areas around the dumpsters are gonna be kept in neat condition, and the dumpsters are gonna look like new.
All right, so are we leaving number 20, or is that going into...
This deals with the fences and guardrails. I mean, you could leave it, or you could merge it with something else.
All right, I think we can leave it as is. You're okay with that, everyone?
Yes.
I hear heads shaking. Okay, number 21, by this resolution of approval, the planning board is not approved into use of or the proprietary, of the location of the encroachments on the subject lots or the adjoining lots, including but not limited to the fence along the eastern side of the property. Twenty-two, prior to signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans to include the slopes summary table. Twenty-three, when tenants are known for the non-residential uses, a separate ARB application shall be required for the freestanding sign. Twenty-four, the installation of the hydrant on the existing main in front of the former TD Bank building shall be installed per Village of Woodbury water standards. Twenty-five, all light levels must be limited to 0.1-foot candles at the property line, so no off-site glare will result, with the exception of 0.2-foot candles with some light spillage along New York State Route 32 and at the access drive to Estrada Road. The fixtures shall meet IDA, LED, or green globes criteria for nighttime-friendly or dark-skY lighting. Any wall pack fixtures shall include non-glare shields. The hours of lighting shall be the same as the hours of operation as noted on the plans. Twenty-six...
Excuse me.
Who's excuse?
We had actually talked about lighting, particularly the site lighting along the property line that it butts the residential zone. And what we did on the current submission is we actually talk about hours of those lights and operations. They're gonna be on a timer with motion detectors for safety purposes. So it's even a little more extensive than your resolution, but that information's on the plan.
Kelly, do we need to include that, or it's already on the plan, so we're okay with it?
It's on the site plans.
It's on the site plan.
Dennis is just taking a look to make sure that there's no conflict between the two. If it's already on the site plans, then we can just take out that last sentence, and it's restricted to that. I think that would be the cleanest way to do it.
I think that if you like the way that it is on the plan, that would be the restriction. You can't have two different, we can't have two different criteria. So we have to have one. All the first part relates to the light levels, and that shouldn't change. It refers to the type of light and shields on the lights and that sort of thing. But the hours of lighting shall be the same hours of operation as none of the plans are not gonna be, they're gonna be in conflict with the hours that we have for operation and what Steve just said. I do believe that some security lighting around there for a motion detector, someone coming home late at night, they can get into their apartment without not being in the dark, would be appropriate, and if you believe so, then I think we can let the condition that Steve said on the plan suffice. And that would be a condition because there is a section in here, and I'll, just because there was a question before. In the preamble to the whole resolution section, where the specific conditions are, it says that you're approving, let's see, that the board resolves to approve this lot merger site plan, special permit, architectural report application as said proposal is depicted on the plans identified above. So that is the first condition, is that they must build in accordance with the plans.
Okay.
So then, just for that condition, I'll remove that last sentence of the hours of lighting.
Perfect, thank you. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Relation? Number 26, snow storage shall be maintained in a safe and orderly condition in an area in Perrin's areas that does not cause nuisance or pavement icing on or off-site. Twenty-seven, this special permit shall be subject to annual renewal by the planning board. The Village of Woodbury Building Department shall inspect the premises during the year after approval of this special permit. On or about each anniversary date of this special permit, the building inspector shall submit a report to the planning board if he identifies any violations or complaints arising from construction of this project. If the building inspector submits such a report, the applicant shall appear before the planning board at a scheduled public hearing to address any such violations and/or complaints prior to renewal of the special permit. The village building department shall thereafter continue to inspect the premises on an annual basis prior to expiration of each renewed term of this special permit to confirm compliance. If no violations or complaints are noted by the building inspector in any year, then the applicant's appearance and the need for a public hearing is waived for subsequent years in which no violation slash complaint report is filed by the building inspector, and the special permit renewal is automatic. However, if there are any significant complaint or irregularity that comes to detention of the building department or planning board in between the annual special permit renewal dates, which has not been remedied within a reasonable period of time after the non-compliance or complaint is brought to detention of the applicant, then the matter shall be brought on by the building inspector for a public hearing before the planning board, at which time said board shall rule upon the need to deny or modify the special permit. Everyone's good with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Normally, I ask for a motion to approve the resolution with changes here. Are all board members okay with the changes that we discussed tonight, or do you need to see them? Because the only major one we were consistent is adding the village building inspector. And we're adding number 13 and number three from Mazer, which you all, which you see in writing. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution with the... Do I have a motion to accept this resolution with the changes and deletions as discussed tonight and authorize me to sign the resolution?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Is that Chris?
Rich.
Rich, thank you. Any further discussion from board members?
Does the footnote need to be changed, being where on the first page, the application proposes being where limiting the size of the restaurant?
I'll update that as well, that's a good point. I'll update that to include the size of the restaurant.
Okay. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Do I have five yeses?
Yes.
Nay.
You're saying no?
I'm saying no.
Yeah, I'm saying no, because I didn't have...
All right, so Rich?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And myself are saying yes. Sandy and Chris are saying no. Am I correct in that now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes at three to two. Have a good night, gentlemen. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Aon, review resolution for proposed eighty-five room hotel. Said property is located one hundred Estrada Road in Center Valley and is known under Village of Woodbury tax maps as section two two six blocks, block one lots. I should say lot twenty-one point two. Or actually, it's two lots because we're merging, correct? Do you know what the other lot number is?
Thirty-nine point two.
What is it?
Thirty-nine point two.
Thank you. All right. Madam Chair, I recuse myself from this application. Okay, thank you. Just want to note for the record that we received paperwork from the engineer on July twelfth and July eighteenth. Some of the, some of the paperwork that was submitted have, did not give our consultants the two weeks prior to review them. I'm going to defer to them on that in a few moments. Being that there is a moratorium currently right now with, with the village board of trustees, we can read the resolution, but we cannot take action on it tonight until said moratorium is ended. And also for the record, the paperwork that was submitted that I have is ARB. We have some crosswork, crosswalk paperwork and then Dennis, you have the full SWIP report, correct?
Yes.
And that's what needs to be reviewed? Okay. With all that being said, the applicant wants to come up to the podium, please? All right, as we left off last meeting, did the applicant get a draft copy of the resolution?
We did get a copy yesterday afternoon.
Okay. All right, and as, all right. I know that you had some questions about it, so as we go, as we go through it, we'll just, we'll take up those items. Dennis, do you have anything to say before I talk, go to my consultants? Applicant, do you have anything to say?
Just that the correspondence today was just to reaffirm that the documents that were submitted were documents which are noted in the resolution when they were originally submitted and they were just for the convenience of the board and the consultants.
Okay, thank you.
Except for the traffic graphic, which showed the spots where the previous traffic consultant, VHB, recommended that those items be implemented. Last meeting, we determined that the graphic would better explain what had been Andrea at the time where she proposed those improvements.
John, did you get a copy of these? Because you're my traffic consultant now, not Andrea.
I, I looked at them tonight, I didn't receive a copy of them, so if you just send them, the graphics to me, that's fine. Okay?
All right.
I, that was the intent, to show them on the, here we go.
Okay. All right. Dennis? Where are we, or Kelly, where are we with what we've submitted and our questions have been answered from last time we met?
What I understood from the last meeting is that the applicant had not submitted anything. They discussed some matters with you last meeting and if they were going to submit something for review at this meeting, it was due two weeks ago. They didn't do that, but in Jason's transmittal, he said that he really wasn't submitting anything, he knew he was just submitting things that he had submitted previously. If that's, if that's the case, then there's really not, nothing here to review. We had issues with a number of items, we specified them in the report to you back in May tenth. Some items that we thought were open-ended, that the board needed to draw conclusions on, one of which was the specific details of the pedestrian study, implementation of things that your consultants, what the applicant had suggested and your consultant said were satisfactory, was on a general, general plane. We think there should be a crosswalk in this general area. The, the consultant said correct, we thought that that should be tied down a little bit more and I understand that that, that material may have been submitted. So, where you are is the same place you were last time. If you, you have a draft resolution, it's going to be, unlike the other one, this is probably going to be more detailed. It's, it's even, because there's, there's a lot of open ends, I believe, and things that need to be resolved. But I think you probably should just get into the resolution, take a look at it. You can't take action on the resolution, but you can make sure that it's, at least I believe you can't take action on, I think you just make sure that it's in a form that's acceptable to you at this stage of the game.
Okay. Kelly?
Everything Dennis just said was correct. There is a moratorium in the village right now on applications for hotels and motels, so you're unable to take any action on this. You can discuss it, you can discuss the conditions. I know the applicant reached out to our office prior to this meeting. I didn't get his email until about shortly before this meeting, because I was in meetings, so I haven't had a chance to review that, but I know that there are some items in here that we have listed as prior to site plan, prior to the signing of the site plan. They don't believe that they should be prior to the signing of the site plan, so I think they're going to try and discuss those with you tonight to see if they can be revised to be included elsewhere. As you can not vote on this tonight, you can keep in mind that it doesn't have to be finalized tonight, if there's something that you want to amend or if you want to give Dennis a chance to take a look at what was submitted to confirm that there isn't anything new or that John just saw the details tonight, just so that, you know, it doesn't have to be finalized tonight, because you can't take any action tonight.
Gotcha. John, do you have anything to add to any of this?
No, I agree with the both parties.
Thank you. Board members? Would you like me to go through this draft resolution?
Yes.
Okay. If we can start on page three, item number twenty-two, where it says stormwater pollution prevention plan, known as SWIP, dated? Dennis might have a date. So it's April twenty fifteen, okay? Just so we can put that in there. Kelly, on page five, where we have the GML two thirty-nine referral, where we talk about drainage site and night sky lighting, is that usual and customary or is that something that you've added to this one?
I typically, those are the advisory comments from the Orange County Department of Planning. You referred it twice and you got two separate responses back. At first I was just going to merge them, but then I realized that they actually submitted like different things and they pulled certain sentences out and not, so I thought it would be best consistent with what the board's previously done, just to include all of their advisory comments.
Okay.
Both times they were local determinations.
Okay, thank you. So, if we continue to page seven, where it says findings, in bold italic print, it says the planning board hereby finds that this application located in the IB district of the Village of Woodbury conforms to the following standards of use, occupancy and operations as set forth in the Village of Woodbury Code, subsects, excuse me, subsection three ten dash twenty-two, noise, atmospheric effluence, glare and heat, industrial waste, fire and explosion hazard, radioactivity or electromagnetic disturbance and hazardous materials. Specific conditions, when I get to a number that anyone has an objection to or wants to delete, please give me a heads up before I read that specific number. Number one, prior, prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated May ten, two thousand eighteen, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Two, all signage for the property shall be subject to all necessary approvals by the New York State through a authority reviewed by the highway department and in accordance with the code of the Village of Woodbury. Just give me one second. Where do we put, there is no off-site signage for a hotel within the village? That's, that goes with accordance with the Village of Woodbury code? Kelly, that's, I'm talking to you on that one.
Yeah, I believe so. I don't think that your code permits off-site commercial signage. All signage would have to be in compliance with your code, so I'm, I'm not positive what exactly the terms of that section are.
Well, there should be no off-site, off, off-site signage. I know we discussed this at one of our meetings.
I'll confirm that, since you're not finalizing it tonight, I'll make myself a note just to confirm exactly what your code says with regard to off-site signage, so that I can tell you at your next meeting.
Right. I can't have a house down on the corner of Oakland Avenue, put a sign up for a hotel that's down the road from, that's why I'll make sure. But you'll check, you'll check that for us? Okay.
There's nothing proposed on the plan, so.
Okay, just, I just want that to be very clear. There's not supposed to be any signages, signage anywhere along Route thirty-two for a hotel. Mr. Lithgow?
So my question on that is it refers to the highway department. I'm wondering if that was meant to be the building department, which would issue permits for signs? I'm not sure why the highway department would have jurisdiction over signs.
Kelly, any thought why we put the highway in there?
They would have, they would have authority over street signs. If there's a, a right turn sign or a stop sign or anything along those lines, they would have the authority over that. If there's striping on the street in connection with the pedestrian...
Okay, that makes sense.
Crossings or anything like that, that falls under the authority of the highway department.
The village highway.
Don't know if that's what all this is about, but I mean, that's the only area that I think they would have authority over.
Well, that would encompass signages, the stop signs painted on the road, that's the villages.
But he raises a good point, so I'll also, I'll revise that to say where it says reviewed by the highway department and building department.
Okay.
Because for the signage that's on the property, that would be the building department, but for any of the stop signs, things like that, that would be the highway.
Gotcha. You're okay with that language? Number three, in accordance with the Village of Woodbury Code, chapter ninety-two, in parentheses, bonding subdivisions and site plans, end parentheses, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall post a bond, at least twenty-five percent of which must be cast with the Village of Woodbury in an amount as recommended by the Village of Woodbury engineer for the purposes of restoring the site to a safe, secure and stable condition in the event that improvements have not been properly or timely completed as required by this conditional approval. This bond shall be in favor of the Village of Woodbury and be in such form as acceptable to the village attorney. Four, the number four has several from A to S. Prior to the signing of the plans by the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise the plans as follows to the satisfaction of the village building inspector? Or is this solely?
This would be the village engineer, that's why I put unless otherwise noted, because I was trying to restrict the number of times you needed to read out prior to the sign of the plans by the chairwoman. Plans need to be...
No problem.
So these are the items that we, we were hoping to discuss tonight. These items contained within number four here.
Can you just tell me what they are, so when I get to them?
Basically, we're hoping to go through each one individually.
So you're from A to S, you have something to do with each one of them?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Everyone, bear with me. Letter A, the applicant shall provide the details on the sewage pump station, which shall show compliance with the requirements of the health department under ten state standards and the requirements of the Woodbury Sewer Department.
So both this and the next one, which refer to the sewer design, and actually C as well, we're requesting that these be items of a building permit.
Get closer to the...
We're requesting that instead of being part of the site plan, which they're not part of the site plan right now, the details of the pump station design and so forth, that they be provided prior to issuance of the building permit.
All right, so B, the proposed four-inch force main shall be subject to the approval of the village sewer superintendent and contingent upon pump selection and station design. C, the final design route of the force main shall be confirmed with the village sewer administrator. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, this line shall be offered to the Village of Woodbury. Kelly, your thoughts on the request? Dennis? No problem.
On the technical issue, for these, I don't think it's a problem, I think it's within the discretion of the board when you want to have it. I, I don't see it in the code that way, so I think it's within your discretion. And I think they could do it on the signing of the plan, on the, I'm sorry, issue with some building permits. But I will tell you this, the success rate of that has not been all that great. We have deferred things previously on larger subdivisions and I've had problems getting the details that we want, because then there's a fight to get the building permit to start construction. But it's not that it can't be done. It could be done if the applicant's willing and, and will, will do the, the work and provide the details prior to the building permit, it could be done that way.
Yeah, in regards to Dennis's comment, this is only a single site, it's not a subdivision where we would, you know, be looking to pull individual building permits on individual lots. It's, it's one site with one building where the, you know, there would be one building permit that we'd be looking for, not, not that we would want to start one house and then come back and get a building permit for, you know, when we get to the tenth building permit, we'll do X. It's only one permit.
So then the applicant, the engineer and the attorney for the applicant, give him the board an assurance that this is going to be done and complete details prior to the building permit being requested. Okay?
Yes.
Rich, your thoughts? Chris? You, that...
Then it can be...
Before the issuance of the building permit, you don't want it on the, you don't want it on the revised plans. You don't want me to sign off on it, you want to, you want the building department to sign off on it and not the planning board as chair.
But that's what Dennis said was okay and he asked the applicant, the applicant agreed to have that in.
Let's go through it again, there's two options here. One is that you, it's really not going to come back to the board, but what would happen is this, if you require that it be done prior to the plat signing, then what will have to happen is before I tell Maria that I think the plat is in form for signing, that the applicant will have to provide all of these details and have this on the plans. That's one way to go and I think it's within your discretion, probably the safest, but that, that's one way to go. Can it be done before building permits? Yes, it can. In that case, to comply with this, they would only simply have to make, these details would be here and it'd be changed to building permit. Maria, when I advise her that it is ready to be signed, it would not have to have these details on it. She could sign the plat, but prior to it going to Gary for a building permit, that's the phase when they would have to do it. And obviously, for an applicant, they're trying to defer some costs to the point when they're going to construct, as opposed to doing it prior to a, a plan. And that's the issue, basically.
If I may, the object of the applicant is not to necessarily defer cost, is to try to make this a streamlined process, so we can get a signed plan and if necessary, use it for the other purposes that we have to do before we can get a building permit, such as agency approvals and construction plans and so on. And I would note, you have done that on other commercial projects. There's sewer conditions on the Mercedes project. I also believe there's at least two sewer conditions that were deferred till building permit on Cabela's, those are ten eleven.
That's no longer, that's no longer an application before us?
No, but it is... No, but it is what the board has elected to do for commercial projects that need to move forward in a coherent way without necessarily waiting for things, basically off-site improvements, to be reviewed and approved. And the point we're going to make later on is, some of these off-site improvements, such as the water and sewer connections that are off the property, really do need to be part of a developer's agreement with the village to allow us to proceed anyway. So, you have a number of belt and suspender opportunities here that I think allow this to move forward.
The pump station, the pump station is not an off-site improvement. The force main is, and I didn't mean to speak to the applicant. If it's not a cost issue, it's not a cost issue, but generally, I see that, so...
Okay.
I think as George said, it's a matter of streamlining, and to put that kind of detail on the plan, it's not going to end up on the site plan, per se, regardless. It's going to be something that's provided in a separate fashion.
Robert?
I'm going to go for Dennis's first option.
Which is at plat signing.
Right.
Chris?
Typically, in the past, you've seen all this information prior to signing off, correct?
Not on all applications. That's why, what Dennis is saying, that we want this on plat signings, because in areas it's taken rather long, or we don't get to see these.
Right.
So, to do it this way, at the plat signing, it's there, Dennis and his office will review it, and, you know, he tells us, tells me that, okay, everything is there, and you're ready to go. And I don't, going forward, what we've done in the past, we've done in the past, but there's, dynamics are changing, times are changing. As we go along, we learn from, not necessarily mistakes, but ways to make everything a little bit better and clearer going forward. So, what has happened in the past doesn't necessarily have to carry forward, as long as we're improving on how we get things done in the best interest of the village. So, I'm explaining myself a little, think about it for a second. I'm going to jump to Rich.
Okay, so, option one is on the plat, option two is not on the plat.
Correct, and it's before the building.
I'm going with option one.
You're going with option one. Chris?
I guess I'll go with option one.
Okay, and I'm going with option one as well, because I'm learning from how we've done things in the past.
Are we going, can I just ask, are we going with option one for A, B, and C? Because B is off-site, and C refers to the off-site. Do you want to require some discussions beyond with the Sewer Department that's going to require discussions with the Village Board as well? I don't know that that's going to take place until we have site plans. That's the whole point that we're making, that some of those outside discussions are not going to most likely take place until the plat is on. That's kind of where we're getting stuck.
I don't have that on, but I don't think I need it.
Kelly?
I just want to weigh in on one part, that some of these conversations are with the village sewer superintendent. The village sewer superintendent is going to want the details. He's going to want to see those, so...
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that dedication of the force main and such, whether it's going to be accepted by the village is not Mickey or the Sewer's Department's decision, it's the Village Board's decision.
And that's listed as prior to the issuance of a CO, the line will be offered. So, the rest of that condition is prior to the signing, but the offering of the line isn't until CO.
So, C will be after CO, or prior to CO?
The first sentence of C is prior to the signing of the plans. The second sentence of C is prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I mean, I can separate out the second sentence of C, if that makes it easier, in a different number, and say, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the proposed four-inch force main...
I think C is almost incorporated in B.
Jason, I need you to use the microphone, please, because I'm...
I said, I think C is almost incorporated in B, so I don't think it's necessary to separate them. To separate C, that is. It's fine by us the way it is.
Okay, so then, A, B, and C will remain the same as prior to the signing of the plans, with the second half of C being prior to the CO. So, then we're on D, I guess.
Okay. D, all of the repairs and improvements required to Estrada Road and the consideration of the pedestrian traffic safety plan must be reviewed by the Highway Superintendent. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, said improvements must be completed to the satisfaction of the Highway Superintendent, and those required to be offered for dedication to the village must be so offered and accepted by the village. We're good with that?
This again, too, so, this is going to need to be approved by a different agency than the Planning Board, or different department rather than the Planning Board. This is why we were asking for these items to be prior to the building permit.
In number four, are any of them that you like, and you agree to, in number four, from A through S?
F.
You like that one?
Yes, we were in agreement with that.
I think that's appropriate.
H, I, J, those are all, we're in agreement with all of those.
Okay.
The rest, we were hoping to discuss.
Okay. I just want to know which ones...
Part of D, again, goes back to the second half of D is prior to the issuance of a CO. I can see the issue in E, where I switched between, where up in C, I said that the force main was prior to CO, and then in E, I said prior to the signing of the plat for the force main. So, I can take E and make that out of this section as prior to the CO, so that it's consistent.
Okay.
But the second half of D is not prior to the signing of the plans, that's prior to the issuance of the CO. All that's prior to the signing of the plans is that the Highway Superintendent agrees, yeah, agrees and reviews them, and if it needs approval of them, he's going to want to see the details and everything. But I will take E and take that out of this number four, and put it at the bottom as a separate one saying, prior to a CO.
Okay.
If I could, this is related to some of the other conditions later on, which require safety improvements to be made, consistent with the pedestrian safety plan recommendations to Estrada Road, the signage, the crosswalks. We have a need to get approval from the Village Board and the Highway Superintendent in order to do that. We don't propose to leave at the chance. We are proposing to enter into a developer's agreement. That's one of the requirements that is mentioned in the conditions, and that developer's agreement should include an agreement with the village to provide those improvements at specific locations, and that would seem to follow for the first part of D. These are not things which you're omitting, it's not things which you're excluding, it's not things which we're going to get building permits or COs unless we've complied with those conditions. This is, you have control over this, there's no question about it. The question is, can we get the signed site plan before we get through the process of all these different negotiations to allow us in order to proceed forward? We have to get construction plans and things like that, we're willing to do that, but for it to be reviewed, we need to have a signed site plan. I went through that on Mercedes. We had to get a couple of signed site plans. Those are all things which have to be accomplished, and you have very effective controls through your Building Department, your engineer. This is not going to dissipate or get lost in some process. I am completely assured of that by the diligent review you went through for Mercedes. You were very accommodating, you did make efforts to make that move forward. You made similar arrangements for Cabela in terms of conditions, you also wanted to move that forward. I think this is not ancient history, this is relatively recent history, from 2014, 15, and 16.
If I could, I just want to be clear that the Board did help, not help, the Board moved those applications along, the Board's moving this application along. You're considering a resolution in the middle of a moratorium. We are discussing different conditions as to when certain details need to be provided, but I don't want it to be thought, and I don't think that the applicant intended it to come out this way, but insinuating that you're not trying to move this along, because it's being done differently than other applications. You've learned from your experiences of those applications that certain conditions result in certain ways things are done. So, you're trying to improve, as the Chairwoman said, on the processes that you've had in place, and you've consistently been trying to improve.
Thank you. At this point, being that it's almost nine o'clock, I'm going to suggest to the Board that both attorneys go over this resolution, review it, come back to me and us with what can be agreeable, and let them hash it out, and I'm not going to go back and forth through three more pages of this, when we are in a moratorium, and at this point, I have no idea what other else agreement that there, what other stipulations that they are in agreement or not.
I think for the most part, we are in agreement. There are some minor points to be discussed later on, but other than the developer's agreement that would cover the signage, I don't think there's any real issues here.
And I'm not being facetious or rude or anything here, but I thought, and I have to go through all my minutes and the notes, I thought we had asked that you do reach out to the Village Board to get some of this dialogue going, so that we wouldn't be at this point right now, that you were not behind the eight ball, were not talking with them with some of, maybe I missed something somewhere.
I did make a reference to the need for us to do that, and I was reminded that the Village Board can't approve anything either, because of the hotel moratorium, so...
Right, but you know how we have, if we send it to ZBA on projects and the Planning Board, and we move together, you know, until you come to an agreement, and everyone, so it's not like we stopped you with going to the Village Board, or to the Sewer Department or Water Department, but I truly feel that, at this point, I don't think it's conducive for all of us to be going back and forth. I'd like to have the attorneys and the engineers deal with this resolution, because as we are in a moratorium, sorry for my back, and if there's only, like I said, there's 22 conditions here. How does the Board feel on that?
I agree.
I agree.
Rich? Do I have to have a motion?
No, no. What I would recommend is that maybe myself or Dennis set up a conference call with George and Jason, so that we can go over some of these, and we can provide the Board instead with a redlined version from what you have tonight, so you can see the changes. And it may be simple things where, like E was repetitive and conflicting, so some of those could be easily resolved, but I think that if we just have a conference call, and we can get you something that's redlined for your next meeting.
Okay. Board members, we're okay with that?
Good.
All right. All of us in agreement with that, so...
And we will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
As my agenda, as you know, as applications come in, you'll be duly noted if this, if you can do this in two weeks?
Yeah.
We'll see. All right? So, you have other, we'll, it's not like the moratorium, we still have another three months with a moratorium, so we're working together. All right, so we'll work on this. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is IBW Public Hearing for an amended site plan, special permit and ARB for the addition of a prefab steel accessory building, 4,600 square feet for classroom use and parking lot expansion. Said property is located at 67 Commerce Drive South, in Harriman, is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Management's Section 225, Block 2, Lot 15.2. Just give me a moment to, I just got to readjust this chair. I'm slowly sinking into the depths of the basement.
Yes.
There we go. Oh, look at that.
Did you bump it?
I'm going, no, the chair, I need a new chair. Okay. Dominic?
Yes, good evening.
Good night, John, thank you.
Good night.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's quite all right.
John has got to go back to Westchester. Sorry for the, oh, okay. Just for the record, on 7/17, we received the ARB information, and on July 3, we received a short EAF.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter. Dominic Cradisco from Drake Globe, on behalf of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I believe we're on tonight for a public hearing, and as you mentioned, we did make a submission on July 3, addressing prior comments on the application, and as well as submitted the ARB information recently. At this point, Eric Boe from Land Associates is here and could provide a brief overview for everyone, in case they would like to be familiarized with the project from the public.
All right.
Hello again. Eric Boe with Land Associates. I'm the civil engineer on the project, representing the IBW 363. Brief overview of the project, what is proposed is a 6,000-square-foot new building on their existing facility. Just like to note for the record that the agenda, I think, was still copied from two meetings ago, when that was listed incorrectly, but the building is, in fact, 60 by 100, 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
The, whoops.
Kelly, there won't be a problem with that, will there? Okay, thank you.
The building is located here, to the northeast of the existing facility. Also proposed is a new parking area to accommodate the additional people. What we've done since last time is added some plan details to address some of your engineers' comments. One of the major items, I'm going to flip to SP 31, which is the lighting plan. We're now showing a detailed lighting layout that covers both the new parking area and the area around the proposed building. Pole-mounted lighting is proposed in the new parking area, the existing lighting in the existing areas to remain. You'll notice from the plans that we do not exceed the maximum levels at the property line. In fact, I believe we've achieved zero at the property lines. The lighting around the building is building-mounted, and mainly for security and access for people going from building to building. The building itself is a fairly simple steel building. One thing I noted when preparing this evening was, we had listed the height of the building at 15. On the title sheet, it's actually just a little above 18, still well below your maximum required height. The inside of the building is to be used for training purposes. We got into this a little bit last time. These are actual rooms here. These here are actually just stick-framed test mockups for the training electricians to use and to be tested in. Per your and your recommendations, we have, besides this porous paver area, a gravel-access driveway, per your fire department's recommendations, and here is a porous paver access for emergency vehicles only. Do you have any questions?
How wide is the front one?
The front?
That porous paved?
Oh, this here, I believe, I don't have it listed.
I didn't see that on the map.
I could measure it for you?
It just didn't look like there was any room, because that light, that solar lighting is staying, right? That panel? I'm not, I don't remember.
I'm going to have to start carrying around a scale.
I have one also, if you need it. It's from a different company. 15?
18.
18. Yeah, and usually the fire, usually the fire department requests 16, so that's good. All right. Anything else from the engineer?
I don't believe so.
And that solar panel that's out there, that's staying?
The, we're not, we're opposing any changes to that.
Okay.
I believe the color samples were submitted.
Yep.
Do you want to bring them up to discuss?
You have, for the roof. What color is the roof?
I'm going to bring the applicant up to discuss the colors.
All right, because the colors aren't listed on here, right? It says metal ribbed. Which one is Varco? This is Varco.
This is, this is Craig Jacobs. He is the director of this facility.
Yep.
I'm, sorry, I was understanding that there was a color chart submitted to you by the company who supply, is going to supply the building, but.
They do have the color chart.
We have the color chart, but on the ARB application, it says the company, the style is metal rib, but the color was not, are you, do you know which color you're going with?
Well, yes.
Or a couple?
Right now, if you look at cool zinc gray and then cool colonial red, but I want to let the board know that I want to work with this company. I'm not happy with these colors. I want to make them closer to the actual colors of the building that's existing. If you look at our building, I think it's a beautiful building.
Where's that back noise coming from? Okay, there you go. Okay. So what color is the building right now, the roof?
The roof is a flat roof. It's a black roof.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't see the roof really.
All right.
Except for maybe the peak of Route 6 coming down, but the actual color of the building itself is closer to the cool zinc gray. Okay? That's the closest thing we could look at on this chart, but it is an actual lighter color than that, and it also has a maroon speck in it. I don't know if I'll be able to get them to do the maroon speck, but I'm going to lighten the color just a little bit. And if you look at our building, you'll notice that there is what appears to be a rose colored band in the brickwork. I'd like to simulate that also on the building. I'd like to make it as close of a match as I possibly can.
Okay, so with Varco, you're saying the cool zinc gray, the cool colonial red, you think? And then the star on the inside, which?
I don't know the stars.
Because there's different color names on the inside of the star building system.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, the color charts are different. I don't have the star one with me. I apologize for that.
Okay.
If you could look at, if I could look at the star chart, I would tell you.
Because I want to give you a range of colors that you can pick from so you don't have to come back before us, because we do have a draft resolution for you.
Okay, truthfully, it would be an ash gray.
What page, on the inside? Okay, second page at the top, ash gray, okay.
And then the rustic red, which is.
Down in the middle there.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So Kelly, on the application, they have Varco Prudential slash Star Building Systems. So I guess for the roof would be the cool zinc gray slash ash gray, I'm presuming, for the color side there. The exterior walls, it'll be cool colonial red slash rustic red. Am I good so far? And the trim colors would be the same as the exterior wall? The trim, the trim, because you're having windows put in the building, right?
Correct.
Or is the trim going to be white?
The trim is going to match the existing color of the, of the windows now and the doors now, and that's a bronze effect on the windows.
Okay, so that would be.
It's, yeah.
So you, all right, so the trim, I'm sorry to put you through this. On the star one, do you see anything that looks? I gotta wait for the tape to flip. Do you see anything that closely resembles that? Because the one is roof color.
Truthfully, it's coal black is closest one, and that's on the third page at the bottom.
Coal black?
Yeah.
All right. And that would be for the star, not for the, or the coal, cool ebony on the varden? Is that, yes or no? I'm giving you like two options with the two different styles. Am I looking at the right one?
No, you're looking at the right one. If we're looking at the Varco one, you have cool zinc with the accent of the colonial red, and the, the actual window frames and door frames will be close to the cool ebony.
Okay. All right, so on, so Kelly, where the trim is, it'll be cool ebony slash coal black. So we give them two companies with two different colors.
Thank you. That, that's helpful because the final contract hasn't been.
And if there's a, if there's a change or anything, once we approve this, it's Gary with the building inspector, and he'll make that final.
Can I just ask one question? So I have, the roof is the one that's gray, the building is red, and the trim is black.
No.
No. Well, what color is the roof?
Okay, the roof is going to match the wall colors. So if we go with the Varco, the.
Microphone, I can't.
So then the building is gray and red, and the trim is black?
Correct.
And what's the roof color then?
That's going to be gray and red as well.
Yes, it's going to follow the same, it's the same color.
Yeah, it's the same color scheme.
Okay, sorry. Just trying to get that right.
No problem. All right, so it gives you options, and if things change, building inspector.
Okay, thank you.
And he'll let us know if you have to come back before us. All right, so ARB, we're good. Anything else before I go to my consultants and? Dominic, Eric, you're good?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dennis? I just want to note that we did receive the short EAF form on July 3. The only thing I don't have is a signature on it. I don't, my copy doesn't have a signature, so just make sure someone signs it and gives it to the building department.
That's fine.
Okay. Dennis, thoughts, concerns?
Well, you didn't ask for a report from us, but just.
Right, because we went over this.
I'll note that this is in compliance with your zoning. We did have some meetings with ESOs. They gave some comments. Those comments that we received from the ESOs are reflected on the plan. One of those comments was from the ambulance. They wanted to see the interior floor model because they didn't want to go winding through small corridors with a stretcher, so I think the applicant has provided that. The recommendation is that be referred to the ambulance corps to make sure that that's satisfactory. We had some comments on stormwater management. We still do, not much. They provided recently information on the pavers that they're going to use. Just want to make sure that that will satisfy their needs because they had a change around the impervious area, and they put pavers in one area, and they changed some other areas to hardscaping because that's where vehicles will be driving all the time. So we need to double check those calculations with the applicant to make sure everything's good there, and also make sure that whatever drainage plan they have here, it's in coordination with the master drainage plan that was done for ICC when it was originally approved. Other than that, I think most of the comments we had were in our previous comments and, or previous reports to the board, and we will comment further when we review the resolution. But I think right now you want to have a public hearing and any input from the public.
Thank you. Kelly? We did intent, we did unlisted lead agency, good. Yes, you can.
At the last meeting, we discussed the easement that goes through the middle of the building. We did in fact come up with, we found a legal deed that did address that easement. It was something we didn't have originally, and that deed, which I believe we supplied, that deed does show that this easement was allowed to be moved to this other location. So there is not in fact a required easement through the building.
Okay.
And we reviewed that, and that's satisfactory.
Okay, thank you.
And that will lead to a condition that will require that they show that on the plat and have a note on there so that there's a paper trail, because not everybody will find that, but they'll find the site plan easier.
Okay. Board members, since this is a public hearing, I'll ask the applicants to have a seat, and we'll go out to the public. Okay? I'm going to jump to the second row. Now, this is a public hearing for the IBW building. Anyone in the second row? Anyone in the third row? Anyone in the fourth row? Please come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, or do you want to, do you want to come right up here and use my microphone so you don't have to? There you go. Will that work for you? Okay. Just state your name for us.
My name is Alan Peck. I'm principal of PL Group, which owns property across the street, diagonally across the road, number eight Commerce Drive South, 108-1-11. My comments are, we've owned the property for about 17 years, and from the day we started to today, we cannot imagine having better neighbors. They are just incredible. They do everything possible to make their property look beautiful, a lot nicer than what mine looks like, but, and they're absolutely wonderful people. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else in the fourth row? Anyone in the back row? Anyone else in the room that would like to speak on this application? Would no one come forward? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make that motion.
I'll second. I'll give it to Sandy right now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, applicants, can you come back up to the? And just for the record, that this, this notice of the public hearing, which I, was also sent to the Village of Harriman, so they, they are aware of this public hearing as well. Want to make note of that. Okay, board members, I'll start with Rich. Thoughts, concerns, questions about this application? Thank you. Chris?
No concerns.
Sandy?
I'm good.
Robert?
Oh, good.
I'm okay. No, I'm good. All right. Any questions for anybody? Kelly? I see you.
Just, yeah, just before you get to the resolution, you did have a, an environmental assessment form. You do need to complete SECR if you could make your determination of significance.
So we, you want to make a negative declaration? No. We did intent, we did unlisted, we did lead agency. So what's the next step?
So the next step, I think it would be appropriate to issue a negative declaration saying that there would be no significant adverse environmental impacts from this project.
I'll make that motion with the words that Kelly just stated.
I'll second.
Chris, you got that second. Board members, any thoughts, questions, or concerns about the negdeg? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's five, yes. Okay. With all that being said, do I have a, can I go ahead and read the draft resolution of approval?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay. This is a draft resolution of approval for amended site plan, special permit and architecture review board for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW Local Union 363. On page three, public hearing, it's going to be, was convened on July 18, and it's closed on July 18, 2018. Also in secret, it was stated that the planning board issued a negative declaration on July 18, 2018. If we jump to page five, specific conditions. Number one, you do have a copy, right?
Yes.
Okay. All applicable conditions attached to site plan, special permit and architecture review board from 2001 to the present relative to this property and any subsequent amendments thereto are hereby incorporated into this resolution and are to remain in full force and effect, and this approval is subject to and conditioned upon satisfaction of those conditions as if they were set forth at length herein. Two, prior to signing of the plans with the chairwoman, the applicant shall revise sheet CD.01 of plans to use a wheelchair in motion for the handicap sign and parking stall. Three, prior to signing of the plans with the chairwoman, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated June 20, 2018 to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Four, all light levels must be limited to 0.1-foot candles at the property line, so no off-site glare will result. The fixtures shall meet IDA, LED, or green globe criteria for nighttime friendly or dark sky lighting. Any wall pack fixtures shall include non-glare shields. The hours of lighting shall be the same as the hours of operation as noted on the plans. Five, this special permit shall be subject to annual renewal by the planning board. The Village of Woodbury Building Department shall inspect the premises during the year after approval of this special permit. On or about each anniversary date of this special permit, the building inspector shall submit a res, a report to the build, to the planning board if he identifies any violations or complaints arising from construction of this project. If the building inspector submits such a report, the applicant shall appear before the planning board at a scheduled public hearing to address any such violations and/or complaints prior to renewal of this special permit. The Village Building Department shall thereafter continue to inspect the premises on an annual basis prior to expiration of each renewed term of this special permit to confirm compliance. If no violations or complaints are noted by the building inspector in any year, then the applicant's appearance and the need for a public hearing is waived for subsequent years in which no violation slash complaint report is filed with the building inspector, and the special permit renewal is automatic. However, if there is any significant complaint or irregularity that comes to the attention of the building department or planning board in, in between the annual special permit renewal dates, which has not been remedied within a reasonable period of time, if the noncompliance or complaint is brought to the attention of the applicant, then the matter shall be brought on by the building inspector for a public hearing before the planning board, at which time said board shall rule upon a need to deny or modify the special permit. Anybody have any questions on what I just read?
There will be one additional condition that Dennis just referenced, that the, prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to include a note regarding the easement. I just don't have that typed up yet, but it's going to say that.
Okay. Everyone okay with that inclusion of number six about the easement note?
Yes.
Okay. With all that being said, do I have a motion to approve this resolution and to authorize me to sign said resolution when it comes back with that additional number six?
I'll make the motion.
Is that Chris?
Yep.
Sandy, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Gentlemen, thank you. Have a good night. I don't mean to throw you out, but.
No, you can throw us out, but thank you all for your reference. I appreciate your review.
You're welcome. I'd be afraid to throw you out, Dominic. Dominic didn't hear that. I'd be afraid to throw you out. Yep. He's our former, he used to work with, he was our ZBA attorney.
Oh.
Yes. Many, many moons ago. Okay, next item. We need this one, in case we need to look at it. Next item is Silverstein, review and discuss proposed revision to the previously approved site plan for an office building and parking lot. Said property is located at 4 Corporate Drive in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 226 block, block 1 lot 88. And, get the right file. For the record, there was a pre-app meeting. on this application back in December 2017. Hopefully I got the right one. Yes. June 25th, we received the response from the Orange County DPW. Just a few housekeeping things. Today, we did receive... Just bear with me, I've got a whole lot of papers here. We did receive the 239M form for general municipal law for the... It's not the title of the project we have, but the LLC as the owner listed is Second Channel LLC, which is been... Which is on the property image from online with the county. I'm showing there the owner as Second Channel, comma, LLC, 14 Corporate Drive. I don't have a form signed by that LLC with the principles on it.
Sepora is the managing member of that LLC.
We don't have the name on here that says Second Channel LLC on the form. It's missing.
Okay, we can...
And I don't have that stated that... Because it says natural person. So I need... I wait... I need that revised.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Also... So we've got to take... And then, in that respect as well, on the application for public hearing, even though it says same, it should say prop... Print property owner name should say Second Channel LLC, and then the applicant should sign it again with a date. So we're missing that. That needs to be revised as well, please. I'm a stickler for all these forms to be proper.
Wait, which form did you just sign?
It's the amend... It's the... Says Village of Woodbury Planning Board Amendment Site Plan Review and Approval.
Okay.
That... The bottom part needs to say Second Channel LLC. Right, the property owner. And also above where it says property owner. Halfway up, partway down, please have that corrected. We received some information from the applicant of a memo from March 22nd, 2005, from the Gary Thomasberger Building Inspector regarding Woodbury Management LLC. We have a short EAF form. I'll go over that. There's some things missing. Board members, you did have a copy of the resolution from 2013, I believe. Okay. I do have an agent authorization affidavit that authorized Jason to speak on behalf of the applicant. I have the county DPW. I did state, received that. We're still waiting something from the Department of Planning. Okay, then. Next time, Jason, can we have a vicinity map on the corner of the site plan, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
And what is the... What is the name of the project going to be? There's some places where it's the two, there's some places where it's one. So what is it going to be, Jason?
The project name is according to the application.
Well, the applicant...
Proposed... That's a good question. What are we going to call this?
It's Site Plan for Sepora Silverstein.
All right, so we're calling it Silverstein. That's how the agenda is.
Silverstein.
Yeah. That's for our purpose. So he has title of the project is Site Plan... How do you say the first name again?
Sepora.
Sepora Silverstein. So going forward, Dennis, can you let Maria know that? Because that's the title of the project. The title of the project is called Site Plan Sepora Silverstein.
Well, similar to...
We never call it Site Plan.
Yeah. Everything is called Aon. It's the Site Plan for Aon.
So the title of the project would be the person's name then? We'll take Site Plan off? Yes? No? Thank you. Okay. Now, Kelly, I just want you to, as I explained to me, as you could explain to everyone, we're calling this an amendment because of...
Yes, so this is an amended site plan. We... This previously was approved. That approval expired. But this is a very similar approval. Also, you've looked at a lot of these issues previously. So your provisions and your code related to a new project and an amended project, they don't differ. If there is a public hearing required for a new project, there's a public hearing required for an amended project. Having it be amended just recognizes when we draft the resolutions for you, it acknowledges the procedural history, the things that you've already seen, and it allows you to pull forward any conditions that were already in those to incorporate into this. That's pretty much why we're calling it amended.
Thank you. Okay. Jason? You're on.
Okay, so just to step back, as you mentioned, we were at a workshop in December. The application, as Kelly noted, had several prior approvals, very similar in nature as far as the use of the facility and general layout. It's kind of an odd-shaped lot, which forces it to be developed in the manner it is on the site plan. We were notified at that meeting that there was two variance conditions, which we believed ran with the property. There was some concern whether those did in fact run with the property, so we took a few months to investigate that. We foiled the records of the village regarding those things. To be frank, it's not quite clear whether that's the determination that's being made. We spoke to Gary and he said... He sent me the correspondence, which I sent to you, which said that the prior applications, the variances were held, specifically the variance regarding the parking. The variance regarding the de minimis lot area has been maintained. So we asked Gary to refer us to the zoning board to make sure that that was the case. He decided that it was best that we come here first to determine whether the variances were still in effect or whether we needed to go to the zoning board. So there is a number of comments. That's one reason why the plans are only the single sheet that they are, not full grading plans and details and such, because our initial application was to the zoning board. So we'd like to discuss that and determine if it's necessary to go back to the zoning board or if we can move forward with completing the more full amended site plan with all the detail that would... It would require.
And the two variances are... You said parking? Because I don't see...
The two variances are that there is de minimis as far as lot area. It's .9 and change where one is required. So that variance doesn't seem to be at issue here. The other variance was for the front yard parking. But the lot is, again, nearly has... Having frontage on, I would consider it more than two sides, the way the road wraps around the back.
It's a corner property. It has two front yards.
Yes.
I'm not even going to go there right now.
And that lot... And that variance was maintained because the two lots that were subdivided ran for whatever time, and Gary's determination has affirmed in his letter, but he's asking that it be reaffirmed by your board or your consultants, was that because the building permit was pulled on the one lot and that lot was built, that it satisfied the condition for the subdivision and when the variances were granted.
Okay. Dennis?
I gave you a report that, I guess it's four pages in length, it goes into some things, but it has... A lot of the things that we've talked about in the report are acknowledged by Jason is that this is not a complete plan, all right? He didn't put grading on here. There's some grading issues, particularly along the south side, that will need to be addressed that are not shown on the plan. The threshold issue here is standing before this board or whether it needs to go to the ZBA. The... There was a history on this application. They were in for multiple applications. Multiple applications were approved, and then they just never acted on those applications and they expired. And so they're back with a plan, and the plan is very close to the original plan. However, there are changes to the plan. And Gary's opinion, when he gave an opinion about the... And it is the density of the property at .9 acres. The property is .9 acres, the minimum requirement is one acre. And so that's... There's a density issue there. And what they have done on this particular... And Gary's opinion was, if the owner proposes a change to the original plans that were approved, a return to the zoning board of appeals would be required. This plan now shows a building that's 7,936 square feet. The original building that was approved with that variance was 6,000 square feet. The increase of 1,936 square feet is a 32% increase. That is... That's a significant increase, and in my opinion, at least, it needs to go back to the ZBA for their either variance or an opinion from them. There's also, let's see, as a result... The parking requirement has changed on the site from 31 to 40 spaces. So there's more parking that's shown on the site. It is some... It is a changed plan, in my opinion. I think that a referral to the ZBA for either reaffirmation of the prior action or for consideration of a new variance should be the action of the board at this particular time. I have some other comments in here, but I'm not going to bore you in the public with all those engineering technical details. I saw great yawns before we're reading the resolution. So unless you have any questions, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Oh, one other thing. Bulk requirements, can you change it from town to village? Thank you. You and I must have been lit up late reading our maps. Kelly?
Sure. Well, Dennis summarized the variances. I believe one of the variances was the issue of the parking in the front yard. The variance was to permit the parking in the front yard, so long as none of that parking has been revised and is consistent with the prior plan, that should not require another variance from the ZBA. But you'll be sending them there anyway due to the increased intensity on the site. And then the only other thing I wanted to comment on was that for SECR, you can declare your intent to be lead agency and type the action as unlisted. Currently, I'm showing the ZBA, the planning board, the DEC, and SHIPO as involved agencies.
Okay.
Maria, one more thing. It's just as a heads up for the applicant, they don't show this on their plan, but Jason, I'd just be sure. We asked for the CAD file, just to take a look at the coverage. They should check that on their own. If they've... They put a little bit more parking here, the building might... I don't know exactly how they expanded that, but there's obviously some additional coverage. You should make sure, if they need a variance, they seek it at this time instead of having to come back and forth.
Okay. Kelly, real brief with the short EAF while I have you here. Project location, do we usually put like the number? Should it say 14 Corporate Drive, Central Valley, Village of Woodbury? Should we put...
Yes.
Do we need to put all that on there? Okay.
If it has an address. There are some undeveloped properties that don't have a physical mailing number. So then just including Corporate Drive, Village of Woodbury, and then the SBL is helpful.
On the front, number 14, and it doesn't say Central Valley. And I was just curious, Jason, brief description, it says to include a two-story office building with a 3,968-square-foot building footprint and associated parking and other features. What's other features? I was... I was just curious as to...
Dumpster enclosure or any drainage structures, those types of things. No other...
Okay, that's what... All right.
Physical type structures.
All right. Improvements. Okay. I was just curious.
As Dennis mentioned, there could be a retaining wall, possible. So those things were meant to be included in that.
All right. And then on page two of three, number eight. A, I think Dennis, you picked up on this as well. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? It was checked off no. We don't know what type of businesses are going to go in there. So I would think it would increase traffic, but I'm not 100% sure. Kelly, you'll take a look at that for us? Being that the 12, letter B, says is a proposed action located in archaeological sensitive area, says yes. Do we have to have an explanation for that? They'll go to the state registry?
It'll go to SHIPO, and then SHIPO would... They've been very responsive at writing letters.
Okay. That's good. And then, number 13, is any portion of the site or of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state, or local agency? How far away do they consider?
I think this one was probably one that came up on the mapper. So let me just see if that one is listed.
That would be number...
Doesn't say specifically, but that's why the DEC would be involved.
They said no on that, okay. All right, because I was just concerned about... It is a little away, but it... There's the Woodbury Creek and Peckman Pond down in the behind. All right. That was it on my questions for that. And I... We did receive a report from Nelson Pope and Vorus. He did the project summary. Once we get into... Later on, he can give us some landscape and requirements and whatnot. And did you get a copy of his... Of the Stu's report?
Yeah, we were in receipt of both Dennis' and Stu's report.
Okay, perfect. All right. With all that being said, board members, who am I going to start with? We'll start with Sandy. Thoughts, concerns, questions? Are you going to defer to Chris? You can defer to Chris.
No, that's a... You... You pretty much went through everything that I had. I just wanted to know... Stu had brought up that we should, as a board, we should look at the old variances and everything, and so I just want to get copies of all of that.
Well, if we're going to be sending them to the ZBA, a referral to the ZBA, they will... They'll review the old ones and see if they hold, stand, or they'll have to do new ones. Am I correct on my statement?
And... And we'll be looking at those variances, old variances as well, because like I said, this is an amended application, so typically your resolutions would have said, subject to the conditions in those. We'll have to take a look at that to see if any of those conditions would still be relevant. Likely census the same... Similar variances that they're requesting. The ZBA is going to have the same conditions, but we want to be able to look at those that nothing gets overlooked.
Yeah, that's all. Okay. Chris? You good for now?
Yep.
Rich?
I'm good.
Robert?
I'm fine.
Nice to meet you. Okay, I'm good for right now. So I will offer a motion that the planning board intend to be lead agency. Do I...
Second it.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll also offer a motion that we declare this an unlisted action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You want a referral to the ZBA and you'll...
Well, can I ask a question?
Sure can.
So Dennis made the mention that because the application differs from the prior, we're being referred to the ZBA. If the client chose to use the exact same site plan, would we be able to proceed with the amended site plan? I'd like to at least advise the client as to the opinion of the...
In my opinion, if... They wouldn't even have to use the exact same site plan. They would have to use the exact same parameters that gave the occasion for the variance, and that is the size of the building and the coverage on the lot, okay? But if you wanted to change something, you know, I don't think that's... That would necessarily go to a change plan. There might be some small nuances, but it would have to be essentially the same plan.
Okay, understood.
But my suggestion, my recommendation for you is that the board authorize the referral to ZBA. If you don't want to proceed with that and submit a plan, you can do so.
Okay, no, I... We do want to be referred to the ZBA. I just wanted to be able to inform the client appropriately.
And Jason, I'm sure you have the approved...
2013.
2013 map that was done for the Quadroplees at the time.
Yeah, I believe I probably signed that map.
I know that the neighbors, the Conklins that are next door, we... I know we went through it quite lengthy about putting the concrete block dumpster enclosure further away from their backyard, because they have young children. On your new plan that you submitted, that dumpster is right near their side yard, and their house wasn't listed on your little... Your... This map here. And the dumpster is closer to their house, and I know at the time, they were concerned about having the dumpster on the... Probably on the other side, so it's away from their backyard.
Sure. I don't think it'd be too difficult to swap that, the parking space opposite it.
All right. Yeah, 'cause I, I'd wanna be remembering the neighbors when we do something like this. All right. Anything else we need to, so we made a motion. Motion to refer to ZBA?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. All right. You good?
Thank you, yes.
You're welcome. I don't wanna take Maria's map, she'll yell at me. Can you pass this down to, to Gail, so she can give that back to Maria? I don't wanna take it home to mistake, so that can go there. Next item on the agenda is Brock and Mann, review and discuss site plan for proposed shul and mikvah to be located within an existing single-family dwelling to include an adjacent parking area. Said property is located at 22 and 24 Catskill High Rail in Central Valley, and is known in the Village of Woodbury tax mass as section 254, block seven, lots one and two. Just give me a moment to get my file. Okay. For the record. John, right? Okay. Why can't I find my form? The form that we submit to the county for the LLC. Well, let's start with the application. It says applicant is Brock and Mann Associates in care of Joel Mann. Says property owner is Woodbury Central LLC slash 24 Catskill High Rail Inc. According to the assessors' office and myself looking online with the Orange County, we don't, there, it's showing the owner as Woodbury Villas LLC. There has not been a filed deed that shows that-
That's for the house lot.
For the house lot. So, where you have 24 Catskill High Rail, we don't have a filed deed that has been submitted to the assessors' office, so right now, they're showing that it's Woodbury Villas as the property owner for number 24? No.
Yeah, the lot was recently purchased by the listed applicant. I believe Woodbury Villas is the developer that is building the lots, and it was just recently purchased, so they may not have, you know, transferred that information yet.
Okay, so the, so the owner purchased the house after it was built with the CO that was issued in May, or wherever, wherever it was. I just wanna make sure that we have the proper, 'cause the CO was signed in March 29, 2018, and it was assigned to Superb Developers Inc. slash Woodbury Villas. So, as of March, it's, so since March, someone-
24-
Who's the actual owner?
24 Catskill-
My, this is for the record, it's Joel Mann, I'm the applicant, I'm actually representing the owner. It's 24 Catskill LLC, Catskill High Rail LLC. They just transferred, once they got the CO, someone purchased the property, and they're now the owners. So, probably, I think, I believe that the deed was filed already, but it takes time until it comes up, and I will probably bring in a filed, a copy of the filed deed.
Well, if you have a filed deed, a copy of it, you should get it upstairs to the assessors' office, 'cause I confirmed with them today, and they're still-
And they don't have it?
They don't have it.
Okay.
There's no filed deed.
That's the information I got, so I will check it out.
And the county is up to date as far as May, so I don't know when it was purchased.
Okay.
And that being said, then, on the application, the zoning district is missing, which I believe the zoning district is considered a CCDOD slash R-1A zone, which is the conservation cluster development overlay district, so that needs to be revised, the zoning district. Then- Yes, and then the proposed project, it says site plan for shul, you need to add mikvah on there. And, Mr. Mann, you didn't sign the application on, on here, it's highlighted where you submitted it, and then we need the LLC form filled out for 24 Catskill High Rail and the principals, and that needs to be dated as well. That was missing from-
And for Woodbury Central.
Excuse me?
And for Woodbury Central LLC.
Correct. And we need, do we need two separate ones, Kelly, for Woodbury Central LLC and then 24 Catskill High Rail? We should have two separate forms, correct?
Yes.
With the principals?
Yes.
So, John, if you can get two separate forms, one for each one of them, that'd be great. LLC, application missing zoning district, date applicant. On July 12th, we received a memo from H2M and NPNV. And, Kelly, what else am I missing on this?
Well, actually, this is a perfect time for me to jump in about the parcel that's on the corner.
Yes, thank you.
That is, there's an irrevocable offer of dedication that has been filed in favor of the Village of Woodbury, so the Village of Woodbury has an ownership interest in that lot. So, before the application goes any further before this board, the applicant should make a formal request to appear before the Board of Trustees to find out the intention of the Board of Trustees with regard to that lot. When it was subdivided, it was listed as, I think, utility lot B, I think.
B, yes.
So, that is a threshold issue for this board prior to moving any further into this application.
Okay. And the first few pages, that was filed, and that was actually signed by-
That was-
Mr. Brodsky and three different titles there, and supervisor then John Burke. And that was in May 3rd of 2007.
Wait, that was, that's the town?
It, it, yeah, no, it was the town, but it reverts to the village.
It reverts because it's a sewer and a utility-
I just wanted to make sure of the parcel.
It's a utility lot. All right. So, with all that being said-
So, that, excuse me, that goes to the village board then if we have to? Okay.
Yep.
But you should be making a formal request in writing to appear before them, so you can get this-
Yeah, the current order said that they were selling it, because they didn't need the booster station.
I'm gonna get there in a second.
Well, yeah, the, the still, the offer remains as irrevocable, and it's out there, so. I don't know if they wanna take it, if they don't wanna take it, if they don't know if they wanna take it, but that's gonna impact your project, so.
Do you want the book number and page number?
Sure.
12636 slash page 318, and there's 26 pages attached to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. With all that being said, do you wanna go before the village Board of Trustees before we move forward on this?
Yes, 'cause I, what I was actually gonna present tonight was, was an apology that the plans were hastily put together due to a notice violation that was issued by, by the building inspector to get a submission in to show good faith that we were moving forward.
Okay.
So, the plans are not up to my, to my level, but we had to move forward, we had to get that application in to satisfy the building department, so that, that's why we did that. And I, I really just wanted to, tonight was to just to go over, if you want, just a real quick overview of the project, or without that parcel, we really don't have anything, so I, I don't really see-
Yeah, I would rather.
-a point of going forward. The only thing I would like to clarify is the zoning of the lot, because we're in the cluster overlay zone, and within that zone, it's the R1A zone.
Right.
However, Jonathan's memo mentioned using the R.25A zone regulations as well, so I just, I just wanna-
I talked to Gary about this, and, and what I put in the memo reflects what I spoke to Gary about the area and the use. He thought that the religious use would need to comply with the underlying zone, okay? So, the total area required would be 58,560, and that would be for the ME lots, the ME lot at 15,000, the other lot at one acre. So, that was Gary's opinion. Gary's the interpreter of the code, so if you satisfy your issue with the village board, then I think you would have to have a referral probably to the ZBA, and they would have to, it, well, that would depend. You, it depends on the, those whole issues related to religious burden and that sort of thing, which I'm not qualified to speak to. Kelly could speak to better than that. The only thing I put in here was some things that we had presented to us by council before from prior similar applications, but there's, there was nothing in your submission thus far that really talked about the use and about the, you know, the ability, the other, other mikvahs or shuls in the area, or anything along those lines, so there was no way for a board to make a determination on that. But that would be secondary to finding out whether you have the property.
Correct. And it's our full intention to do a full narrative explaining what we're doing, showing, getting the correct zoning on there, showing the setbacks and any, and any potential zoning issues that we may have to work through. I just, I just noticed in, in Jonathan's memo, he's saying that to use the R1A as a place of worship, but use the bulk requirements of the R.25A. So, I, I just clarify that down the road, that's all.
I would- I would suggest talking to Gary just to confirm, then you'll have, 'cause what Dennis has presented tonight is Gary's opinion, his interpretation, so if you wanna confirm that with him again, because then your timeframe does start to run to appeal his determination if you disagree with it.
You know, I, I agree with the way Dennis wrote it.
Oh.
The .25 threw me for, for a loop, so I just wanna make sure we got it, we had to patent that.
Understood.
Okay. I just wanna ask a question. Why would you need such a large parking area? How many spot, there are 20 stalls?
20 stalls, the, the shul proposes 60 seats, so the code is one stall for every three seats.
All right, and this would be used, what I'm getting at is 20 stalls for 60 seats? Most people would be walking, 'cause they wouldn't be parking, 'cause they live in that area, or is it for family?
It-
I just, I, 'cause we just went through this, and I just wanna clarify in my own mind how we're approaching this.
This is actually a little bit of the opposite of the last one that, that we had, the board had gone through with, with myself. This is more, gonna be more of a, not a, not a local one.
Use your microphone, please?
It's gonna be local, but it's going to be weekly. It's, it's not just restricted to weekends or holidays, so the note that was on the plan is erroneous. It's going to be, you know, full week use, so we actually need the parking, at least that's what the applicant feels, that he, he would like the parking there, not waive the parking.
So, all those notes were incorrect?
Correct, 'cause they were copied from the last one that we did. That's why, when we were trying to generate this plan set in speed, that was mistaken. But we would have to prove anyway that we could get that parking.
Right, if you-
If we go down that route.
All right. So, that's, I was, I was just curious as to why that was like that. And depending on how the outcome is with the village Board of Trustees, will you have the driveway for this parking?
Yes.
Lot area? I thought we were quite, when we approved this whole project from years ago, being that it's at a circle, at a roundabout, that no traffic would be near exiting from a driveway near to a roundabout, just in case there was traffic issues, you know, with the neighbors and, but that needs to be looked at into our original submission, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, I will.
Because being that the driveway's so close to the circle.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, we had men, we had matched, there was an existing proposed, it wasn't for numerous cars, but there was a proposed driveway there for the water booster station, so we had just matched that a little bit.
Okay, which is a little different than-
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, you're gonna do your due diligence, you're gonna go to the village board, then you'll come back to us with whatever requests that you further-
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask Kelly a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Kelly, um, as far as, because this is a, these are private roads, private development, as far as bylaws, offering plans, declarations, how do they, how do we as a board come to decisions based on-
Similar to easements. You don't generally take into account all, if you're aware of an easement, you try and develop around it, like the IBEW, they've confirmed they were able to move it. These are really private matters between private parties, if there's an issue with the HOA, the bylaws, things like that, the offering plans.
So, the offering plan could say one thing, and it wouldn't be up to us to interpret that, or to even take that into consideration?
It wouldn't be up to you to be enforcing that. I don't, I don't know what it says, it's like 300 pages. I feel like I haven't read it in a long time, but it's not up to this board to be, to be enforcing that offering plan.
Well, I mean, I've, I've read a portion of it, and there is a absolute statement in the declaration that says there won't be any houses of worship used, you know, in a private home. So, we're going to be in direct conflict with something that their offering plan, or that their declaration states, so.
So, I'll take a look at it, and I'll take a look at whatever, the, the pages that are involved, but I don't think at this point in time, we need to get into anything further on that, simply because we don't know if they're even gonna be able to do this to have this parcel next to it. But I'll, but I'll take a look at what it says. Like I said, I haven't read this one in a, quite a long time.
Okay. I know, I, I think I sent the, an email to Rick, I might not have copied you on it, with certain pages that were highlighted, that-
I'll get it from Rick.
So, check with Rick, 'cause I think I, if I find it, I'll send it to you this evening.
Yeah, 'cause I think we need guidance.
At midnight, I'll send it to you. No, I'm, I'll, I'll be asleep. All right, so John, you're all set? You know what you need to do?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Being that it's 10 o'clock, I wanna thank the remaining Woodbury residents for staying with us to, this evening, and it was a little rough going here tonight. I'll offer a motion to close to, to close. You seconded? He beat you, Sandy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everyone, have a good night.